The council for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanum.
Here.
Mr. McCann. Absent. Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Stow.
Here.
Mrs. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. McCann is excused. Six members of city council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. Welcome to our couple of guests. You're high on the agenda tonight, Sophia. We ask you to join us in our pledge of allegiance. This meeting led by Mr. Hanum.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda. I would like to add as agenda item twelve, a brief discussion about a Timocog Bike Month activity. Mr. Frye.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Other members of city council. Mr. Sanford. Mr. Schroyer. Chief Snorr. Mr. Aller. And Mrs. Brining.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
That is their motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
And moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and our agenda for this evening is approved. Agenda item four is approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting on May the second. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move adoption of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of May second, two thousand and twenty-two as submitted.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from May second, two thousand and twenty-two as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. Agenda item five, we are very pleased to welcome to our council chambers our new executive director of the Sylvania Community Services. Sophia, I first met you when you were working with the Sisters of Saint Francis. So you come highly recommended in that way. But we think you're going to make a wonderful new director. You're the first new director of Sylvania Community Services in a long time. And your predecessor grew that organization greatly. We look forward with great expectations for what you're going to do. And I'm going to let you come up to the podium and give us more information about you, your organization, and what your plans might be.
Again, it's wonderful to be back serving Sylvania in the director. I have been on the job probably thirty days now. At that time, I had the opportunity to engage so many of our peers. Actually doing chair aerobics at our senior center with our seniors as well. But really, at this point, what I wanted to share with you was the excitement that we're having both time of transition, the opportunity for here after years, re-envision where we as Sylvania Service. When I looked at the history, knowing that school district, township, council, created this agency, help improve the quality of life for residents, here is an opportunity for us to come back to the table. What does that look like? So I really look for one as an opportunity. When we begin to say services and the quality that you're looking for, your constituents, as SCS looks not just at our childcare, but our senior centers, at a wonderful park a couple of weeks ago. And Mark, when I have you at the senior center, I know that we've... So that is my goal, as we recognize that our demographic, who our seniors are and how they define themselves, is shifting. I've had some... I'm with the superintendent. All I have... How do we make sure that we can respond? Population, as you guys know, school district. How do we make our staff are able to be well trained? And I won't take it very much... Excited when I see Mr. Sanford. I knew him when I was in high school, back in his old Catholic club days. So it's just a reminder of how far I've come and just the wonderful mentors that I've had.
You must have been a much younger underclassman.
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Sophia.
With that, let's get into agenda item six, which has to do with our first change order for Maplewood Avenue Reconstruction. Mr. Aller is coming up. You can see they've shifted over to the other side of the road and making progress on the next phase. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, things are going quite well with the project. Weather cost us quite a few days in a row there for a little bit. Back on track and they catch up and we're a little bit ahead of schedule. With the project, though, a couple of things did come up. As we were starting to look at some of the doors that are along that project, we were concerned that we did not have... We had some frosty issues with the new sidewalk and everything. Afraid that we... And so we installed some frosty slabs. Have frosty in those locations. And the price of those was about, was one thousand two hundred and fifty thousand. So thought those were a good idea to move forward with. And then if you remember back in two thousand and sixteen, actually had a smaller mining project. Did several areas, smaller areas around the... Maplewood Avenue was one of those. That time, and the... We're lateral for the police department and everything was fine. Coming up to the project when the project was... Or kept having plugging. That serves the building, we better take a look. That time, between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-two, had a pretty good belly. Things were getting into belly settling. We needed to obviously repair that. So we did do that. That was a... Actually, it went through middle of S-line. It was a little bit of a... We agreed because of all of that, the contractor wanted that on a time and material basis and... Down, down there, you never thought it's going to happen. That cost came to five thousand twenty dollars. This final change... This change order number one, I apologize for the terminology, the change order number... That's the contract terminology, that's the... Project change system. This is the first change, this is change. Original schedule took them right up to... Were questions... Just met with production. They think probably... A lot of...
Weather co-op.
Weather co-op.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Aller? Mr. Richardson, this is a street issue.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. I read by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number one to this city's agreement with Helms &amp; Sons Excavating, Inc. for the Maplewood Avenue Reconstruction Project for additional work performed, increasing the contract amount by eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents, appropriating funds therefore, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-two as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-two is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item seven. This has to do with right-of-way acquisition. It's from city-owned property into the public right-of-way. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, these are for properties that the city owns that are within the silica footprint. And one parcel that we're dealing with, parcel ten, is the northeast corner of... Parkwood Drive, is just a short little triangle. Old, old water or old wells.
Wells were on that side.
As I said, pumping.
Pumping stations up in Burnham Park.
Side of the old wells that they use for the water system. Second parcel, parcel nineteen, is basically the properties, City Hall and... Port. And the final parcel. Small section there. There are temporary easements as well as full-scale warranty dedicated to that area. All of the parcels have been valued, phaser, but custom... Recommend donation.
But this is legally necessary to put the property into the right-of-way and out of the city property. All right. Any questions for Mr. Aller? We have other property acquisitions coming for this project, I assume?
Have approximately thirty temporary and... Part of this project. All of the property owners have been notified. Had discussions. These will start coming.
Two is enacted as an emergency measure. To Mr. Aller. We're now on to agenda item eight. This concerns the existing lease between the city of Sylvania and Sage Yard for Burnham Park. Like to have the law director give us the background on what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in January, well, let me back up even further. Sage Yard applied for grant funding from the ODNR. I believe, and in, over the fall and winter, they were informed that they were successful. And as part of the process, they were required to submit a copy of the lease that they have with the city for both... Currently, there's one lease that covers both Burnham Park and Plumber Pool. They submitted the lease and ODNR got back to them with their comments that they did not... They did not like the cancellation provision that was in the existing lease. So they recommended that...
Let's explain that more. They didn't like it because they're investing state money on it and they were afraid it could be transferred to somebody else.
Right. That's, yep. So I'm getting to that point. So they requested that the language be added or removed so that the public funds would be protected for fifteen years. The existing lease that we have provides for a five-year term with two five-year renewals. At either one of those, twelve months before either one of those renewals, the lease could be terminated. That's what the ODNR did not like. And that's what they recommended we delete from the Burnham Park lease. And it only affects Burnham Park because that is specifically what the grant money is going to be used for. So we've, since January, have been working with Sage Yard's attorney to get, and ODNR, to get the language finalized in a form that is acceptable to everybody so that Sage Yard does not lose the funding from the DNR, which has a deadline of June. So there is a timing, a little bit of a time crunch on this. And I know Mrs. Westfall's been involved and heard about it from all of her participation on the Sage Yard Board as well. But, so this is strictly for the Burnham Park property. I will be coming back to you probably the first meeting in June or second meeting in June for the revised Plumber Pool lease as well. There's no grant funding associated with that, but because of the language modification and the cancellation and the way that frankly, it costs more to operate that. So that one required a little bit more, more work. So this is strictly for Burnham Park. There still is a cancellation provision in here. It just has to be approved by ODNR. It's still a fifteen-year term. Sage Yard is a hundred percent responsible for the repair and replacement and maintenance. And we haven't had any, any issues with Sage Yard's operation of the park. Anybody have any?
So Leslie.
Mm-hmm.
We have today is a single lease.
Yes.
For both the pool and the park.
Nope, just for Burnham Park.
Just for the park.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. What we have today, not in front of us, but what we have in operation today is one lease for both the park and the pool. What we need, what we are doing is separating.
We're going to split them.
Correct. So and what is in front of you is the lease for the park. What I will be bringing to you is the lease for the pool.
Got it.
And the reason there's a time issue with the park for the grant funding.
Is there a reason we're doing a lease rather than transfer ownership? Particularly the pool.
The pool? I don't know that there's interest on their part for transfer ownership. I think they still would like the city to, to own it.
I'm not sure that there's been a discussion on it formally.
Right, we haven't formally proposed that. And we have... Well, the city does have a capital. Submitted that as for some proposed capital funding, so that we may not be able to do that.
Okay.
We may run into the same issue with the fifteen-year term on that.
For not to give them the water tower as a part of Burnham Park?
I don't want to give them the water tower. I get that.
Pool, that's not a bad idea. We will discuss that. The state capital improvement grant that we are hoping for would provide funds to improve pool filtration system and the pool house. Like to get those in order or there would be an official transfer to them. And then going forward, we would hope that Sage Yard would include the operating costs and future capital costs on both Burnham Park and the pool in their levy costs. The basis of Sage Yard is that they provide recreation for the entire community. And the city taxpayers shouldn't be obligated to apply it for everybody. However, they haven't had a chance to get it in a levy yet. So that's why we're, we're working on these two grants.
And this is not an issue for us today.
Not for today, right?
It's not an issue for us today, but it's, you know... When city, we don't have squeezed city finances, but when you have squeezed city finances, frequently pools and recreation facilities tend to be a place to look.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, and we're not there. I'm not saying we are there, but I'm just taking a long-term view.
We went to them five, five or six years ago, Leslie.
In two thousand and fourteen.
And asked them to take over the pool, not because of squeezed finances, but because of the logic that city taxpayers paying the entire load. And it should be supported by the tax base of all the people using it. That's what Sage Yard is for. And they graciously took it on at that.
And we endorsed their levy at, at the same time, I think.
You know, this would have been included in their levy last fall, but that levy did not pass. Going to jump through these hoops for the state money and be obligated for any capital, big capital issues between now and when they pass a levy.
Is there a, I guess a minimum length time or we can cancel? Fifteen years just seems like a long, a long agreement.
Those might quick.
Fifteen, yeah, 15 years, because ODAR, ODNR does require 15 years for, yeah. Yeah, it was, um, we, it was 15 years, it was a five-year term with three five-year renewals, but ODNR requires a 15-year term, because I believe.
$200,000 that they're giving for improvements to Burnham Park, and based on that.
Dollar amount.
Dollar amount, they require 15 years to ensure that their investment, um, meets the expectations.
But I guess, understood, I guess. Mention there would still be an, an option to cancel if.
Yes, if ODNR can approve it, if, say, for instance, say, this is a little bit of a unique situation because it's owned by a public entity and it's operated by a public entity. So, um, ODNR, i- if we just, if the city went to them and said, you know, we're still gonna operate it as a park, but, you know, Sage Yard wants to form a different branch and it's gonna be a subs, a different subset of Sage Yard, and we are gonna enter into a lease with them, I don't think, as long as it's still operated as a park, I don't believe that ODNR would have an issue with that because it would still, it would still be used for a public purpose and, but they do want the 15 years, 15-year commitment because it is tax dollars being reinvested for that property.
Westfall, any further comments you'd like to make?
I would just say, uh, thanks to Leslie for working with the law director that, uh, not the law director, the legal counsel for Sage Yard to move this forward. I know that, uh, Leslie and administration worked on trying to move this forward quickly so that we didn't lose that $200,000 from ODNR. And I think that's what started the, I'm certain that's what started the breakup of the two contracts, but I do think that there'll be some benefits to have time to slow down and have a little further discussion about the pool and what's the right thing for the pool. So I, I'm confident this is moving in the right direction. Thank you for your help.
All right. Ms. Westfall, we do have ordinance 54, 2022 to approve this lease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 54 dash 2022 and read by title only, authorizing lease between the City of Sylvania as lesser and the Sylvania Area Joint Recreation District as Lee C. for Burnham Park, determining said city-owned property not to be needed for municipal purposes during the term of the proposed lease. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to sign such a lease on behalf of the City of Sylvania. I move passage of ordinance number 54 dash 2022 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 54, 2022 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 54, 2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. We're now up to Agenda Item Nine. This is for referral to the Planning Commission for their study and recommendation. And because of the short time schedule or the, the lack of meetings, city council meetings in July and August where we only have one, and we would not want to stretch this out too long for the applicant, uh, we've, we're asking city council to set the public hearing date for the same meeting that we expect to have the answer back from the Planning Commission. Planning Commission will meet the second Wednesday in June, and you'll have an opportunity to, you can cancel the, the meeting if that does, if the Plan Commission doesn't come through and with their recommendation. Mr. Hanam?
Yeah, I, my question is, uh, I didn't have a chance to look at the plan today. Um, this is an M1, we don't have a lot of M1 in the city. Um, how, how do we feel about, I mean, and, and also, why B1, not B2? I don't underst- you understand, Kevin? You know what's going on? But that was, that was also the marijuana distribution.
No, it's the building across the street.
It's across the street, but it was there because it was an M1.
Yes.
Is what I recall.
Yeah, there used to be a dry cleaner in this strip, and there's a bar, I think, now, or.
But you could do retail use in B2 as well as B1, right? Well, I would be interested to hear what his thinking was, Mayor. Realize that in the planning commission.
We will ask that question at the Plan Commission.
Yeah, just curious.
And.
Curious, more than, not concerned or anything, just curious. So, all right, well, I would, uh, are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move that we, uh, refer application number ZA dash one dash 22, uh, to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. Uh, do you want me to do the hearing now or separate?
On motion? On motion.
Okay, and I move that we set the public hearing date for June 20th, uh, 2022 at, uh, 7:15, uh, PM, uh. 7:15 PM.
And moved and seconded to refer zoning application one, 2022, the Plan Commission for the review and recommendation, and to set a public hearing date for the prod, for the zoning change for June 20th, 2022 at 7:15 in these council chambers, and authorize the clerk to advertise that hearing. All in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any committee reports or committee referrals to be made at this time? Hearing done, we'll move on to added Agenda Item 12, which is, brief discussion. This is TMA COG's Bike Week. Um, in the past, I have participated in TMA COG Bike Week activities, and I intend to this time, um, and was wondering if members of city council would be interested in doing the same, and to try and pick a time to do that. Um, just as a starting point, I'm proposing next Monday to meet in the hotel parking lot at 4:30 or 5 o'clock. I will ride my bike to work that day, weather permitting, and we can have a group picture taken of whatever elected officials we have. Um, TMA COG would very much like put that on their website. We've done that in the past. And if that day doesn't work for you, or if it happens to rain that day, our rain date could be Tuesday, the next day, a week from tomorrow. I don't know whether that'll fit with any of your schedules or be of interest to you, um, but I thought I would offer.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you said, uh, bike ride, um, you've talked about a picture, but were we gonna then ride somewhere?
I'm going to say that I rode my bike to work that day.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Sanford described to me that he used to do things like this, and it was Bring Your Bike to Work Day instead of Ride Your Bike to Work Day. I will ride my bike to work.
I won't ride my bike to work.
Um, it might be good if you can bring your body.
Ride down.
If not, you can stand behind my bike.
Oh, there you go. I know, I think it sounds great. I, I.
What time, Mr. Mayor? I missed.
I was saying 4:30, but I am, I am flexible to meet your schedules.
Yeah.
I believe Doug also has a, a manually powered.
I do, thank you. It's, uh, it's ancient, but it still works.
So this would be Monday, May the 23rd, one week from tonight, if that time works for you. There's one, Mary said yes.
That 4:30 time will be a little challenging, but I'll do all I can to be there.
We can push it back to a quarter to five. I, I'm flexible.
I, I think quarter to five would be, every little bit helps.
Five is fine, if you just want to make it easy, 5 o'clock.
Five, right, 5 o'clock.
I have a conflict, but I think you can go forward without me.
Sure, sure, since you said no motorcycles, you don't want to come.
Okay, and it was mine.
I've got new, I've got new leather, so, you know.
Just because that's, there's plenty of parking there, I was saying the hotel, um, that you can get out on the bike path if you'd like. We'll fi- we'll figure something out to do. Mr. Sanford will help us stage this.
Send something out.
Do we bring kayaks afterward?
Well, we could, but it's not kayak to work with.
I don't think it's gonna be deep enough to kayak. Today.
Wishful thinking.
All right. That's terrific. I appreciate willingness to participate. That brings us to the end of our agenda, unless there's additional items. Let's look on the back page. Not much in the way of, uh, informational items for you. It's the meeting minutes from the Board of Architecture Review and the Planning Commission and Bank Reconciliation Statement. Um, there's no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting three weeks from tonight on Monday, June 6th at 7:30 PM in this council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you.